All right, it's 5:30. Time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for all those that are here in attendance. Some of you might be required to be here, but the others that are here are voluntarily on their own. Thank you for being here. All right, let's get started. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look over the agenda?
Yes.
I have.
Any comments?
I'd like to remove Item D from the consent agenda into Items for Commission Action.
All right. Gary, how about you? Are you good?
Sounds good.
All right.
And we do have, we do need to move Item M and N, correct, up to public hearings?
Yes.
Move Item M and N and Items for Commission Action to the public hearing section.
All right. So they'll follow under A.
Yes.
M and M, M and N, public hearings on property. All right. And then also, under A, we need to move T, which is, consider rescheduling the following commission meetings due to new oil activities and Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday. We need to move that right under A, under, consider adopting a resolution for the business incentive program. So T will follow right after that, and then we'll continue on with the setting condemnation hearing dates for the property that's listed on the agenda.
You're relocating Item T to where?
T to under Item A, under Items for Commission Action.
Because we're setting the hearings and we have to move the date before we set those hearings.
Okay.
Okay, so after doing all that, are we good with the adoption of the agenda?
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda as modified?
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Now we're going to move to Part Two, Appointments. And the first one on the list is the Economic Development Advisory Board. And I had some questions on this that I've relayed to you, and I think Jeff had given me a response on this. I'd like to extend the deadline and the time on that. I would like to see notification in the newspapers, advertising that, and also probably on the radio stations, an announcement. Because if you're not on, if you're not web savvy, or you get on the Internet often, you would miss that posting altogether. So let's make it more out in the open, so, and we'll extend the timeline for this. And I would like, I would like to extend it, if you gentlemen want to talk about this. I would like to extend it to have the, extend the deadline to, all applications must be turned in by the date of the second commission meeting in September, and then we will bring those, make those appointments in the next commission meeting in October.
So you want?
We're going to extend it roughly thirty days out.
Okay, so second commission meeting in September would be the twenty-sixth, so you want that to be the deadline, and then you want to consider it on the October tenth meeting. Is that accurate?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And we did receive ten applications. I was surprised we got that many that quick. That's amazing. I don't remember getting that many on any city boards in years for that. Sometimes it's all we can do to get anything to apply.
Right. Well, I had someone ask me they hadn't heard, I guess, so I thought, well, maybe we need to go ahead and expand that.
And I did post it on the city website, so everybody that signs up for those got it. It went on the Facebook page, went in the AR, and I also sent it out to those organizations that were here before, Main Street and Chamber and MAC, and they sent it out to their members. So we did try, and we did get some results. We got a lot of applications, and I thought, that's really good, we had that many people interested.
Sure, that's good. That's good. I think this would be a good move for us to take. So unless you gentlemen have any objections, let's, we'll move on from there, okay? Next on will be Park Board. I'd like to reappoint to the Park Board Molly Reynolds, Val DeFeever, and Jim Hogan. Reappoint them to the Park Board. And on the Plumbing Board, I'd like to reappoint Doug Rink, Pat Howell, and Wayne Sunquist to the Plumbing Board. Gentlemen?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. All right, adoption of the consent agenda. We made a couple of changes on this. D, we removed to Items for Commission Action. And then we have previously noted moved M and N, that were for commission action, to under public hearing, and they would follow Item A. And then we have moved T, which was Rescheduling Commission Meetings, and we will insert that under A, under Items for Commission Action. So after saying all that, I think that's everything. I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with those changes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, first, on the list, Public Hearing, Item Four. It's a public hearing to consider granting a waiver to Section six dash two of the City Code relating to a request for a waiver for the restriction on location for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in the Central Business District C dash three at two twenty-three West Main Street.
Mr. Mayor, I will excuse myself again, since I am an investor in the brewery.
I understand. All right, thank you, Gary.
I don't know if you have any ready.
No, that's for parking.
For the, for the city, do you want to present?
I can, I can present it. Actually, we got this request in February, the same time we were doing the conditional use permit, and I happened to run across the email the other day and looked on the minutes and found that we hadn't taken action on it. So I put it on your agenda. We published it in the paper. I did receive one letter that I emailed to you, and other than that, that's the only response we got. Had the, it's kind of interesting, because the Booth Hotel didn't own that parking lot next to them. They act, this probably wouldn't even apply, because they're right out, little over one-hundred-and-fifty feet from that building. But since they own that property next to them, it goes by the property line, so that's why it's within the hundred-and-fifty feet. And it's not, even though it looks like there's some residential around there, it's actually not zoned residential, so the distance to the residential doesn't come into play on this.
The residential zone was actually on the south side of?
It's like over three-hundred feet. I measured it. It's over three-hundred feet away from this, so it doesn't come into play.
Yeah, the, I questioned Kelly about the residence on the north side of Maple, and surprisingly, that is zoned commercial, so that was excluded. It's the south side of Maple, it's the first residential area.
Okay. All right. There was no public comment concerning this matter, so.
Oh.
All right. Okay, any other, any other questions, Leonard?
No, I have no further questions.
Okay. Then I make a motion to init, okay, we've, the motion is to initiate a public hearing before the Planning Commission to consider a text amendment to the conditional use table. Wait a minute, wrong page, sorry.
Grant the waiver?
Let me back up.
Sorry.
Nope, I had too many yellows here.
Four A, should be four A.
Okay, I've got way too many yellows here.
First.
Wrong one. Okay, let me back up here again. Okay, I move, I make a motion to grant a waiver to Section six dash two of the City Code relating to the restriction on location for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in the Central Business District C dash three at two twenty-three West Main. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Kelly.
No problem.
All right. Now we are looking at Item M and N. M is, consider adjourning a public hearing to consider condemnation of seventeen oh-one North Tenth Street as dangerous and unsafe until October twenty-third, twenty-nineteen at five-thirty PM.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Yes.
You need to use the word recess instead of adjourn. Adjourn means to close the hearing, recess means to postpone it.
Okay.
I mean, if you adjourn it, you've closed it, then you've got to republish it again to have another hearing. So you don't want to do that.
We want to?
Recess it.
Recess it.
Recess it.
Okay.
And we've probably been doing that wrong for.
Yeah, I think we have.
Okay, now, okay, let me read that again, then. Let's make the record straight. Okay, Item M, Consider recess of public hearing to consider condemnation of seventeen oh-one North Tenth Street as dangerous and unsafe until October twenty-third, twenty-nineteen at five-thirty PM. David, how are you?
Hi, Mayor, how are you?
Dandy.
Good, good to see you tonight. As you know, Mayor, this structure was heavily involved in a structure fire. We are close. Don believes Don is on vacation for the, tonight, so we expect we can have this in, I think we said it for September, it says October, but we're going to go September twenty-sixth, and we'll be able to take it off. They should be done in the next thirty days, and we should have all the inspections done. So we are asking to recess this for thirty days to September twenty-sixth. David Swankford?
Yes.
Okay, looks great.
Yes, they have made great improvements, and they've been a pleasure to work with, so it's going well.
They're primarily working on the interior, finishing up?
Yes, they are doing the finishes. They were, they were slowed because they were required to do an additional ADA apartment, so they had to do some modifications there to make it ADA, to meet some of the housing requirements for the money that they were receiving for it.
Looks good. It took a while to get that started, but once they got it started, they seemed to be consistent and move on it.
Yes, they have been good to work with.
Okay. Gentlemen, any other questions? I don't have any. Are you good?
I'm good.
All right. Then I make a motion, my move, to recess the public hearing to consider condemnation of seventeen oh-one North Tenth Street as dangerous and unsafe until September twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, at five-thirty PM. Do I? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. All right, Item M, Consider recess of public hearing to consider condemnation of five-thirteen West Cottonwood Street as dangerous and unsafe until September twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen at five-thirty PM. David?
Sir, again, this house was involved in, and not as serious of a fire. Took us a while to find the owners and get everything going, but they have worked diligently. They are close, as you can see, and Don feels that by September twenty-sixth, it will be finished, and we'll be able to bring it back and remove it from condemnation.
Fantastic. Yeah, looks good. I wish we had more properties that ended up like this, instead of the ones we're going to get ready to look at here shortly. Yeah, okay. Gentlemen, are we good?
Good.
Good. All right. I make a motion that I move to recess the public hearing to consider condemnation of five-thirteen West Cottonwood Street as dangerous and unsafe until September twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, at five-thirty PM. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, now Items for Commission Action. Item A, Consider adopting a resolution establishing a business incentive program. Lacey, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Great.
Good, okay. At the August eighth meeting, the commission decided to postpone the offering of the five-thousand-dollar job incentive, job creation incentive to Indy Brew Works, because there was no formal written policy regarding the incentive. So Kelly and I, and with the help of April and Tricia, put together an incentive policy that you guys should have received, and I can go over this in whatever detail you want, but it's a fairly short and simple. This would be a baseline incentive, something that I think our city greatly needs, something that we can publish at our website that says to businesses looking to locate here, that we're easy to work with, and at a minimum, this is what the city will offer you to come and locate here. I mean, I will say that incentives, in my opinion, are always a negotiation, so very likely, a industry or retail business could come in and say, you know, okay about the, your baseline, but I'd like you to offer more. Anything like that would likely come back to the Economic Development Advisory Board that you are creating, but this would just be a baseline incentive offered to, and the criteria is defined in the policy. So if you met the criteria and the funds were available, you, you would be eligible for this incentive.
Yeah, I looked through the proposed program and, you know, have some questions. I'd like to see some of the other communities, what they're offering. And one thing that was brought up by Mr. Botts, he did bring out that this isn't a retail, it's actually manufacturing. When you look at the definition in our city ordinance, microbrewery is identified as a manufacturing operation. So, you know, I think that throws a little different light on consideration. Retail, it's a little more volatile, you know, with the classifications of employees, part-time, full-time. So, you know, that was something, and we just discussed what they, today brought up, the fact that really, as we look, we're looking at a manufacturing operation. So, you know, I think it would be nice to maybe get some definitions, so we can look at defining the type of businesses, so it's a little clearer that. There's been, been some question brought up, and some people concerned about incentives for retail, and I think, you know, as we look, just like in this case, we've got a small manufacturing business coming in with the availability of FabLab, Jim Correll's entrepreneurship. I think we could attract a market of small manufacturers, and that would be, I think, a preferred emphasis for incentives in getting them established with the longevity and the employee opportunity, that, you know, if we could focus in on that market, it would be beneficial for the city. And, you know, with our, our Economic Development Committee coming on and their input to help accelerate that, you know, I'd like to, like I said, look at examples and see what other communities particularly looking now, you know, it was like, I guess, when, looking at the brewery, for me, it was retail. I didn't really consider, I know what the definition said in our ordinance, but it showed a different light, that really we are looking at a smaller manufacturing facility, and I think if we could emphasize that with our incentive, would be a lot stabler market than focusing in on, on retail incentives. So, you know, it could really be a draw to the community, that we can market with the college, with FabLab, with, with the entrepreneur program, and really develop an attractive package to present to small industry.
So you would like to see this expanded, because it's not just retail in the policy?
Well, I would like to basically eliminate retail and focus in on manufacturing and industry at this time, you know. I guess, just having the first look at it, and I apologize with scheduling, I just got to look at it last night. So it's trying to absorb, and then in conversation today, the, when we're visiting, and he brought out the manufacturing purpose of the Indy Brew Works, it was something I thought we needed to look and consider a little more than, because, you know, we're not going to have a lot of money to put into the incentive programs, and, you know, even expanding beyond the money, that some of the things it was talking about, of startups, how the money, maybe there's other things the city could offer, well, like was, was brought up with the water meter fee, that if?
Assistant development fee?
Right. You know, maybe some things that we could enhance the package beyond just cash that could be more beneficial. You know, I think we've got a good start, but I think it needs to be refined and.
Would you consider authorizing it with the, excluding the retail, so that we can move forward with this one, and you can always change it? So that we can move forward with the requests that we have?
With the definition of employees has, I guess, the application relating to this, so we got that ironed out, that we can see a firm application.
The employee definition is the FTE through the Kansas Department of Labor. So it's defined like that.
But we'll have an application from?
Yes.
Has?
Yes, you'll have an application, and we can get that to?
We already, we already provided their, their application. What are you wanting, exactly?
The application?
It was included with the August eighth packet.
That was with Montgomery County Action Council?
That, that was the application. There's not a, I mean, we could develop an application for this new one, it basically have the same information.
We have the policy links to their application, that MAC has already developed.
So that's, that's a policy you want us to adopt?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty comprehensive, and has a lot of information on it. So, you know, like I said, you can always change it.
Sure.
You know, as we go on, it's going to be something new, trial and error, and as we go along, I'm sure you'll have things you want to change. I would just like to move along the requests that we have before us.
Sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong, was it just based on, like, Bartlesville or Coffeyville or, I don't know?
Which ones, Bartlesville?
Bartlesville and Coffeyville, it's actually a merger.
Yeah, I mean, Leonard wanted to know what other cities were doing. I think you're looking at what other cities are doing.
Yes.
I think some tweaking was done, but this is kind of what Bartlesville and Coffeyville are already doing. I mean, to answer that point.
Okay.
But the purpose isn't to attract necessarily any niche, it's a job creation policy. But, I mean, jobs are jobs, whether it's retail or industrial, or, I mean, people need a job, you know, whether Cabela's opens a retail outlet, or, you know, somebody opens a manufacturing, people are going to line up, and they're going to want the jobs. I think that's the purpose, as opposed to focusing on retail.
It's not meant to draw a certain type of business necessarily, that that's not kind of what you're, I mean, there are different levels based on what type, but the overall purpose of this is not to specifically draw retail over another industry.
And this is really, I don't want to say inexpensive, because it's money, but the bigger companies want a lot more than this. They want the, the tax breaks and all that. That's where, that's where you really start talking numbers, I think.
The questions I got from the public were basically, in the past, we didn't, really didn't have a policy set up that considered retail, and they were giving me some reasons as, as to why, the volatile nature of retail in itself. And then the other question I was getting was that.
I haven't seen a policy at all, so, I mean, I wouldn't dispute that statement, but I don't know what policy they would be talking about.
I don't think, I don't think they were identifying a policy, but I'm thinking they were just making the general statement that there wasn't anything ever set up to consider retail that they were aware of. And then my other question that I get from the public was that, on the job creation, normally, when you come in and you get this incentive to, to provide so many jobs, then at the back end of that, at the end of the year, then whatever the stipulations are for that job creation, you've met that, then at that point, you met those stipulations, then the money at that point is given to the, the company at, at that point.
There, there are stipulations of a repayment if you don't meet certain requirements, that's all laid out in here. You, you get a, like, let's look at this, the small retail, for example. You qualify for up to a thousand dollars per job created for over a period of five years, meaning that if five jobs are created in year one and two, and two additional jobs are added in years three and so forth, the company would be eligible for up to seven-thousand dollars in year three with this, seven jobs. And then on the follow-up section, if a business incentive is approved to an applicant, the recipient shall provide the city annual sales or employee reports in order to determine the amount of annual incentive payment. If a forgivable loan is chosen as the incentive program best suited for the job, annual job reports and employee residency reports will be required to forgive any payments. There's a due date for each of the reports. At the end of the five-year incentive term, the employer must submit their Kansas Labor and Wage Report showing an average of at least five full-time equivalent employees. If they don't meet that, the, we can grant one additional year for them to meet this requirement. Otherwise, they would be paying back a prorated portion of the incentive given to them. So it's not just handing over the money and then giving them free rein. There, there are stipulations and requirements that they have to fulfill.
Right, I, I understood that. I guess, I guess the statement was that normally that, that incentive is paid at the back end, not prior to a business?
I think from our research, that is not the normal. I mean, this was taken from other cities' policies. So I, I would say that has not been the norm necessarily that we've seen.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was kind of my question, too. If you give the money upfront, then how are you compensating for work that hasn't been done? And how do you get the money back if they don't meet the requirements? That, it sounds more like what was initiated was not an employee incentive, but establishment incentive, because, you know, the, the grant was given before something was set, and.
I can explain the rationale why that's done the way that this is structured, because
Because if, if a retail business is coming to town, the weight of their project costs are gonna be at the very beginning. Those initial offset costs to open, it's their operating systems, it's their IT systems, it's their initial cost to do trainings for all their employees. And we wanted to be aggressive in that, that's when we know all of our businesses have their highest costs. If we're paying at the end of year one, they should already have their footing and they don't need that incentive at that point. They need it at the very beginning. And so we're, this is something that, uh, we've heard time and time again from retailers, um, across Montgomery County and in a regional level, or we've talked about it with, um, the Kansas Economic Development Alliance, that this is something that's being done across the state of Kansas. And so, that's why it's structured that way.
Well then, why don't we call it, uh-
For either.
An incentive, as an establishment incentive, why are we calling it an employee incentive? Why don't we just set a figure and, and say, okay, if you come to Independence and open a business, we'll give you X number of dollars and no matter what business comes in, that we give them that money for their setup. Why, what's confusing is when you try and tie this into an employee base, that it, it starts getting-
But we're trying to encourage jobs, not just a business that comes in and has one employee. You, you come in and you employ more of our people, you're more attractive to us and we will incentivize you greater.
Then set it up as a, as a minimum number employed, but don't call it, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you a thousand dollars an employee. That, uh, a restaurant comes in and has eighteen employees. So are you gonna give them eighteen thousand dollars?
That's how it is outlined.
And I, I don't think we have the money to do that.
Well, and that's why it's structured as a first comfort serve.
If what you're trying to do is set up an incentive to open a business, well then let's look at that so that we can get farther with our money. And, you know, I, I agree, that initial opening, uh, of a business where you've, you've got your meter deposits, your phone service connect and all that, that is an impact, but I think we would be better, and this is strictly my opinion, that you develop a program that we're going to, to set that if you open a business for your startup fee, based upon a minimum number of employees, we'll give you, uh, if it's five thousand dollars. If you have minimum number of employees, you get five dollars, five thousand dollars to establish your business and to start up here. Then if you wanna look at the longevity of, we've done with the bigger businesses where if you have continued operation, then like Cessna, they have to provide the documentation and get reimbursed. We've got a similar one with Standard Motors, only some different incentives there.
Those are both based on job numbers, actually.
Right.
So this is actually following the policy that the city's already established and that wasn't the reason why we did it this way. All the incentives we've been done in the past, with the exception of a couple, were actually based on the number of jobs created. It wasn't an amount, just a blanket amount. And this actually helps the city plan, helps the city budget. And as it says in the policy, it is a, um, as funds are available. Which also, if you think about it, provides a bit of a carrot to get businesses to come in a little faster, um, to come after that money at the beginning of the year. It helps the city plan, it helps you plan. Um, and then as the city runs, funds run out, then the city commission can then justify finding alternate sources if they feel that's necessary or needed. Um, but then it also allows you to say, well, we've run out of money in November, apply in January and th- those funds renew. So it, it'll give the city commission and city staff guidelines, so you're not pitting business against business. You're not saying, well, oh, we think your business is gonna have this economic impact, we're gonna give you twenty thousand. Well, we think your business is gonna have this impact and you're five thousand. Well, turns out this business that gets twenty thousand is your, is Joe Bob's cousin of the mayor. And suddenly you're obligated, uh, and, and, and somebody says, well, you're, you're showing preference. And so this really prevents that and really I, um, insulates the commission and staff from that, uh, perception. And that's why it's being done this way in a lot of other communities.
We've done this a lot of times in the past. I mean, this is just what we did with LaBette, right? So really, the only difference is, I thought we already had a policy, cause ever since I've been on commission, we did it routinely. So we didn't have a written policy.
Never a written one that I've found.
Right, okay.
Well, that's what I thought too. I've been operating on basically this policy.
Yeah, when I first got in commission, I was expla-, it was explained to me, this was our policy.
Same here.
Apparently, we never had that in writing. So-
I think it was only limited to LaBette, Cessna, Standard Motors. It hasn't been routinely on a large scale.
I think we've done more than that. I don't think we've done retail, but, um, I, I know, I see Brent sitting here and I know he invested a, a million dollars in Dairy Queen and I would love to offer an incentive, although, I'm guessing he turns over people so fast, he probably has a kid he hires one day and they fail to show up their first day of work, that kinda thing. But, so, um, I can see a lot of complexity with doing it for a business like Brent's, like a Dairy Queen, or retail in general.
And that's why it's structured as an FTE. It's, so it's not like, you're not counting Joe, Sarah, Kevin.
Right, right.
You're counting, these are the position this company has in place and needs to be filled.
But so at the end of the year, Brent might've had a hundred and fifty employees, cause some of them only lasted a few weeks. So you look at the total hours paid in payroll and divide that by forty or something to get FTE?
Thirty, but, it's thirty hours.
Thirty, okay, alright. I'd love to hear him, but-
I didn't sign her up, but I'd love to give you some. We-
Come on up, Brent.
When we opened Dairy Queen, we opened with seventy-five employees. And I knew it was gonna go down to fifty, you know, but we to this day maintain a, a salary of forty-six people. We've increased, uh-
But almost all those are part-time, right?
There's, uh, eleven, twelve, full-time.
Wow.
And then I have the rest are part-time. They, like you say, come and go, but I need them. Cause they're students, they go to college, they're cheerleaders, they're athletics people and things like that, so.
So FTE, you could be at like thirty.
Exactly. So the point about this too is, this doesn't need to be based on opinions. It needs to be based on people that run businesses in this community and produce tax dollars. And that's a fact. From, we opened July the fifth. And my payroll from July the fifth through December thirty-first, Leonard, was thirty-one percent because of training. And the people we had to bring on to manage the first month of business, a hundred and ninety-two thousand in sales.
Wow.
Yeah, July the fifth through July the, now, we didn't do that this year, but this town missed Dairy Queen at one of it. You know what I mean? And they wore us out and we're thankful for it. But, um, we still have increased revenue from the old store. We doubled our employment staff from twenty-one to forty-six on average. And, and we, we've increased tax revenue half a million dollars. And so, to, what you need to ask yourself is what kinda tax revenue are these people gonna promote to this community? To help our infrastructure, to, to work with other people in the, uh, surrounding areas that wanna come into Independence. It's a beautiful town, but we do have issues regarding things getting accomplished because of opinions instead of people that are out there busting their knuckles, paying their bills and borrowing money locally, using woods lumber to supplies, doing all those things. And, um, you need to back up and take a breath and think about it from that perspective. These people have got a ton of money invested. People that came in and did Dairy Queen has completely restored a building downtown. You know, who in this community has stepped up to the plate like the Hogsetts and the Littletons and Steve Morrison? And we're all outsiders. I don't see the people in this community making the effort we are. But every time we try to do something, we, somebody's foot's up our butt. And, and I'm getting sick of it. And I just want you to know that.
Yeah.
And, um,
Well, I guess-
There's a lot more ways to skin a cat than, than your opinion. And that's all I'm saying. So, y'all, think about that.
And that's your opinion.
That's correct. But I know how to skin a cat a bunch of ways.
Yeah. I think we all got that ability. But the thing that, that I'm trying to grasp in a day is what is put here that was discussed al- almost a year ago. That we're trying to make a decision to look long-term, to make it equitable for everybody and, uh, I don't think this is not being unappreciative to you and the ones that have come in from outside of town and put millions of dollars in their facility. We appreciate that. It's not being disrespectful at all. It's trying to get educated on what's been presented to make an educated decision. Not just be sitting up here and say yes, whatever you want. And looking at other options too, that when we're trying to provide incentive for somebody, how are we gonna do it? And make it go as far as we can because we gotta live with it funds. And, uh-
I will say this, my twenty-eighteen label is thirty-one percent from July the fifth, from about the middle of June, excuse me, to December. Cause there was two weeks there was no sales. We just trained people and made food and gave it away. That's a big deal, training people to run a business or brew beer, whatever they're doing. And, and another point is Dairy Queen, we manufacture ice cream. You know, I gotta clean out ice cream machines. I got two ice cream machines, forty thousand dollars. Now, I've gotta follow the, the rules and the laws and the, and the ordinances about cleanliness and standards. And when I have to clean and sanitize an ice cream machine, you know what I do? I put it in pint containers and I stick it in my freezer in the dining room and we sell it by the pint. Well, they're not doing anything different. They're selling as much beer to people that wanna come in and drink it. And then they got a bunch of beer left over, they're gonna bottle it and hopefully distribute it around. So, I'm in the manufacturing business too, but-
So it's a restaurant, basically, because they're taking raw food in and they're producing a meal, so-
That's right.
The world is a manufacturing outlet.
It's the same principle though, Leonard, and that's all I'm saying. We're in a manufacturing business and a retail business, and that's no different than what they're trying to accomplish. And so, um, I'm just, I'm just ready to see, I'm just ready to drink a fresh beer, you know what I mean? I'm ready to see some things happen and some, and some, some deals get changed. And I'm, I love looking at that store and if anybody's been in it and walked through that building, it's gorgeous. And, and it's, and it's no different than the, um, the bakery, it's no different than the Dairy Queen, it's no different than, you got people around here trying hard to make things better and create tax dollars. And I just encourage you to do the best you can to accommodate those people.
And I think we have.
Yeah. You're good, Brent.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, um-
So I'm not sure what we, I don't know what I would take back from this discussion because we presented it based off of number of employees. Historically, that's kind of what we've done, we have done. You spoke to, oh, let's try and do it based off of X number of employees, you get this. So I mean, we keep going back to the number of employees. It's, I, what I hear you're saying, but I, maybe I'm not understanding correctly.
And I think our problem is, is the deadline. I mean, they're wanting money. They want to be able to apply to get the money to operate. And what, what I'm seeing, look at the procurement policy, we had dialogue. We went through it and discussed, we reviewed. What's happened to the commission is we were presented with here, approve five thousand dollars. It was promised with no program, approve it tonight. And we said, we need a plan to do this. So now we come back with a plan two weeks later and we're at the same point of just approve it so we can get the money down the road.
Well, I think we were asked to do this quickly. That was the direction that we had.
Because we had no choice. Because the commission was put in the situation to make a decision now, although the commitment had been made in fall of two thousand eighteen. There was time from that point to decide, we have no program to do this. We had time to bring a plan together. And it didn't happen. It was brought to us at one point that the commitment had been made. We need to authorize a payment to get it down the road. And now this is where it came back. Yes, we wanted to see it. We have to see it, but the discussion isn't, give us your opinion, it's approve it so we can get the money out the door. You know, if you want us to review it and make suggestions, you know, we don't need to sit here and argue over our ideas. We have to have a dialogue. You present your idea, I can present mine, but we don't need to be adversarial about our ideas. We can sit down and discuss and work it out. But you can't keep putting everyone under the pressure, not you in general. Okay, you understand?
I, I get it. And I agree, we need dialogue to, to come up with plans that you ultimately approve. But my only issue is, what I'm hearing you say is that you want it based off of employees, yet when we bring it to you based off of employees, you don't like it. So it's, we, I am confused on what direction we need to be going. If the direction is no retail, then say no retail, not muddy it with number of employees, but only for X, Y, and Z, but not A, B, and C. I mean, that's the kind of direction that I am needing, or else I'm, I don't know what I would change.
Yeah, and what I see is, like Trish said, businesses coming in need, need money. And, and I think that's something we need to be considerate. How can we help them with that startup? If, you know, when I hear incentive for employees, I'm seeing that we're making a commitment based upon number of employees over a period of time. And we keep referring back to, even in this, it's in five years. If you have this, you've gotta document, you gotta give us a report. I'm thinking, I already gave you the money. So five years, I really don't care. I got the money. I don't need to give you a report because I'm not gonna get any more money. It was already given to me. So, you know, if we're gonna say we're gonna give you startup money, let's just give them startup money and, and we can stop all the paperwork, but then base it, maybe tiered. Initially, five employees are entitled to five thousand dollars, ten employees, ten thousand dollars, one time to help that initial startup. Cause it is a big-
That just doesn't encourage longevity. I, I think is kind of what we saw.
Well, this doesn't encourage longevity either, because I get my five thousand dollars and in five years.
If you leave before the five years is up, you, you pay it back.
You do.
Yeah, and that may be something that, um, Jeff, in the process, when we, when we ever get these in front of you, uh, before the check is issued, um, you, uh, official inducement agreement is written up, um, that your city attorney can help draft. We've done that with other projects. Um, that inducement agreement says that. And that company has to sign that, a legal document, notarized and everything, that's then sent off and filed with the Attorney General's Office. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Jeff. But you have clawbacks then. It protects the city, it protects the, the company. You're offering goodwill, a gesture to the company that's based on this, so they can see on the website. And I guarantee you that a manufacturer, I'm working on an RFP that's due tomorrow. They don't tell you what it is, here is the amount, um, of, that this company is looking for, here's how many jobs are created. They don't tell you what they're looking at, they don't tell you anything, but you can at least have this so they can see, okay, the City of Independence is looking for my business. They are open to business in comparison to, I don't know, a, a city up the street in Iola or something. Nothing against Iola. But if I'm gonna choose between these sites, this one at least, it's, it's nothing, it's gonna train two employees, but it's something that shows this city is a goodwill gesture to my business that I can open my startup here. And hey, maybe that for a small business manufacturer, that'll buy a lift, that'll buy an air compressor, that'll buy, um, you know, equipment that they need, a new oven, whatever that is. So-
And I'm not saying we don't need, I'm saying we need an incentive package. We need an incentive plan.
That's what this comes together with. So this is one tool in the toolbox that we offer. All those businesses come through Mac or the Chamber helps in these as well. You know, we put together, and Indie Brew Works is a great example. They have, they've used every tool pretty much in that toolbox that they are eligible to get. This is the last one that we had available to them. They've used USDA, RDA, they've used CDBG, they've used, um, E-Community, Jim Correll's entrepreneurship program that you talked about, he went through them. Startup Kansas, women a minority. Um, he went through the SBA. He's gone through every single step, um, that a business can go through. He's gone through every single step that a business can go through. And we've utilized every tool basically eligible for a business like this. So this is just one piece that we're trying to, to make sure we have very covered, so you have a written policy in place. So that whenever I go in front of a company and they come to town, here is the package we put together, and this is just one component of that.
Tricia, I, I hear everything you're saying. I, I, I like the idea of incenting a business to locate in Independence. I know the brewery is spending three hundred thousand dollars. Brent spent a million dollars. So I gotta believe they're here for the long term, because they've made a major investment. The thing that bothers me a little bit about retail is I've seen retail stores open, like we had one open on Main Street, and I thought it was really cute. So I said to my wife, you gotta go see this new store. And we went down there, a week later it was gone. I mean, they, they came and went so fast, they, you know, nobody was coming in their store and they closed their doors. So I'm a little more hesitant to offer incentives to a retail store and thinking we can collect it in five years. I, I don't believe there's any way in some case, because they come and go so quickly sometimes.
That's my point.
Yeah, so I, I'm also a little hesitant about saying, let's include retail on here. Yeah, if it's just a, you know, a store that's selling women's clothing or, you know, God only knows. They could go any day.
Well, is this, is this something we need to have a special meeting that we can just devote time to discussing it, you know, within a week or so?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. My couple comments I wanna make. Basically, we're here today to resolve a commitment that was made back in April of 2018 of a five thousand dollar payment. And then if we have any questions concerning this and we wanna change, we can change later. But, but we're basically under the gun to approve a five thousand dollar payment.
But you don't have to have a policy. We haven't had a policy for all of these other incentive plans. Just to say you don't have a policy means you can't approve this request
Right.
is, is probably not accurate. I mean, you, you can if you agree to the terms and you can always set the policy later. They're not, they're not one in the same. You can do it without a policy if you choose, if you, if you want to go that route.
The common thing I'm hearing though is you aren't interested in retail. That's the big issue with what we presented so far. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, I have concerns about that.
You all agree on that?
I, I think statistics nationwide prove about half of all new businesses, startup, they fail within the first three years of opening. They don't, half of them never make it, never make it to the third year.
So are you including like restaurants in that as well?
Yeah, I just, that's just a general term that, when I was doing some research on this, that it was primarily confined to retailing. And usually by the time the third year comes along, about half have already dropped out. They weren't able to sustain their business, so that happens.
We could certainly exclude those at this time and then we could work on refining it, however you guys wanna do it.
Gentlemen, what do you think?
I think it's a special meeting where we have time to
Yeah, this feels very rushed to try to approve a policy like this. We've just, we've just had it for forty-eight hours or something.
I, I think we need, we need an incentive plan. We need it in writing, we need, we need it worked out. And unfortunately, it's long overdue. I think it's a start. I think it's a, a good start. But we need to sit down and, just like on the procurement policy, work out our understandings.
I would address one comment that you guys said too, that as you're, when you're getting into that special meeting. The reason why we're using the MAC application is because when we have a small business that's coming to town, we don't want them to fill out seven different applications for all these different incentives. It was one application that answers all the questions that you guys would have in here, would be answered in that application. And then MAC distributes those applications to the appropriate entities. We do the same thing with E-Community, we do the same thing with Startup Kansas to CDBG to the county. The same thing would happen with this. And that way, when the business comes in, they have one application, one point of contact. It makes it so much less headache for them. And this is something that we've worked on really hard between the Chamber and, and Main Street and MAC to try to make this as seamless as possible for, for our businesses that come into town. So that's why we did it that way, point of clarification.
Really important.
Simple is better.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I understand that. Those are the questions that I have, that I hear from the public. But yeah, I think so. I think we need to, us three need to get together and hash this out a little bit. Like I said, we've had a couple days to look at this, but if we get a chance to answer, have you answer some questions that we had. And I'm not gonna comment anymore on that, on this.
When would you like to meet?
Gentlemen, what does your schedule look like?
I don't have a calendar. Look, Mom. When are you guys available? September fourth, I, I can't. I could do it later in the day, but not, not in the morning.
You wanna shoot first, September fourth?
No, that's just the only day I know.
No, you can't. Okay, I'm, okay. So, that was what, Wednesday? September fourth?
Do you have a calendar?
No, I don't. Was it Wednesday? How would you feel about September the fifth, Thursday?
Is that next week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks from today.
It'd be Labor Day week, the same week as Labor Day.
Okay. Retired, I don't look at calendars.
Okay.
I just look at when I gotta do something. That would be fun.
So you're thinking nine o'clock?
And make it. Fine?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, and this room is available then, so.
Okay, September fifth, Thursday, nine o'clock. Lacey, are you available?
Yep.
Thanks. Thank you, Lacey, for the information. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much.
Ken, the, the application, Trish, is the application available on your website or how can we get a copy of that?
Yes, the application's available on our website as well. And I believe there's links even on their, on the Main Street's website and the Chamber's website as well, that links back to that as well.
I noticed, while you were talking, I saw where it says application here. It was, that will actually be an appendix to the form too, so, okay.
And if you go to the HTML version of the website on this item, I think that's a link that you can click and go directly into that application as well.
All right, ladies, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Item T, it's for commission action, and that is consider rescheduling the following commission meetings. Item number one, Thursday, October twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen to Wednesday, October twenty-third, twenty nineteen, due to Niwala activities. Item two, Thursday, November twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen to Thursday, November twenty-first, twenty nineteen, due to the Thanksgiving holiday. And item three, Thursday, December twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen to Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty nineteen, due to the Christmas holiday.
Sounds fine.
Sounds fine to me. I'm, I'm sure I'm, I'll be around all those days, so.
I'm good.
Okay, then I make a motion that we reschedule the commission meetings. You want me to read this again or as previously stated? As previously stated and recommended, I make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
The only thing you may wanna also discuss on that is you have your third Wednesday that falls the day before the, the November twenty-first and the November, or December nineteenth meeting. And I don't know if you wanna keep those dates, so you're having two meetings in a row or not. It's just something I brought up, thought I'd bring up in case you wanted to look at that.
Yeah, we can kinda play it by ear when we get closer.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so you don't say, well, Kelly, you didn't tell me we're having two meetings in two days.
Oh, we're still gonna say it.
Not that we haven't done that many times before.
Last week.
Yeah, and the week before, I think.
Okay, now moving back on schedule. That's right. I missed that one too. Okay, item D. Consider reschedule the special commission meeting for the site visit to the water treatment plant. And September fourth was not a good date, so we need to come up with another date. And if I'm going by memory, Kelly, is that September eighteenth at nine AM?
When the engineer was available, it's also your third Wednesday. So I didn't know if maybe that might be convenient for you.
Something came up that is September fourth and I'm not available. So, you know, it's not that I'm needed if you guys wanna go ahead, that's fine. But I have a commitment that morning at nine o'clock, so I need to be at it. It just came up yesterday, so.
No worries. So the eighteenth? Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I think I responded already.
Yes, you did.
I was good with that date.
Thank you for that.
We're all good?
I'm good.
So just needed an official motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we set up special commission meeting for a water treatment plant site visit for September the eighteenth at nine AM. I make the motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay. If I'm keeping track right, that's all the changes, is that right?
I think so.
I believe so.
Okay, now back to item B. Here we go. Consider setting the date of October twenty-third, twenty nineteen at five thirty PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation, one twelve West Chestnut Street, as dangerous and unsafe. David?
Commissioner, Mayor, this house, we've received numerous complaints. The house is listed for sale. We did speak to the realtor and he did contact me today. And there is a possibility that somebody may be willing to take this on. Therefore, I'm not gonna talk in detail about what I know about it.
Okay.
And I told Tim that was fine. If that person was willing to purchase that house, he could come. I didn't plan on taking it off, but come to, to you guys on October twenty-third. And we could discuss it then. And Tim was fine with that. He did, he just wanted to make sure we weren't condemning it tonight. And I said, no, we're just setting a date in October twenty-third. So it potentially could be purchased and renovate, a lot of renovation done by then, who knows, so.
David, you said there are a lot of complaints. What, what's the nature of those complaints? Just that
Some of these people are people that actually went to look at it for potentially purchasing, but they contacted us because the, somebody done some stuff structurally that they don't think the house is safe.
Yeah, okay. Doesn't look that bad from the photo.
The outside doesn't, and that was my back to them. And then they explained what they saw.
Have you been in the house?
We have not been in the house. We have not. We're just going based off numerous complaints that have been given to Don and me.
So actually, before we condemn it, that structural issue has to be verified.
Yes, we will. Yes, yes. And I, I've spoke, when I spoke to the realtor, I mean, he understood exactly what I was talking about. We will have pictures by then, when, when we come back.
Okay.
I noticed the letters that we sent to the owners were dated August nineteenth. That's typical on all these. A letter mailed in Independence takes two to three days to be received. So there is a chance that the owners wouldn't receive notice of the meeting tonight till today.
We had a little mix-up on that, and we've corrected it following
The first required mailing is after you set the date for a public hearing, so that's what I was going off of.
Yeah.
And this is more of a courtesy letter.
I know. I thought if, if they're gonna, if the owner wants to be here, we need to back up.
Right.
You think of a letter going across town, it's three days, that's
Most of these I've been working on. We, our group, Lacey, April, Don and I have been working on for several months and we've made multiple attempts to contact people.
Yeah.
So, but we understand and it was just a little mix-up. And we'll make sure, we, we make, we will make sure we get them all notified prior to any meeting.
That'd be great.
Okay, any other questions on this? I, I don't have any. Gary, you're good? Okay, then, okay. I make a motion that we move that a public hearing for consideration of condemnation be set for October twenty-third, twenty nineteen at five thirty PM for one twelve West Chestnut. And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item C, consider setting the date of October twenty-third, twenty nineteen at five thirty PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of three oh five South Eighteenth Street, as dangerous and unsafe.
Mr. Mayor, this house, the owners live in Elk County. We have been visiting, visiting with them for the last three to four months. They have no means to do any rehab or to do anything. The contents of the house are actually in the backyard. If you would walk into the backyard, under all of the brush and trees, his couches, dressers, mattresses and everything. He knows our intention is to remove it and they understand, they just have no means to assist. So he's aware we are starting the process.
Has no resale value? I think they'd try to get something for it.
Not really. Yeah, he's been trying to do something with it. It's not in good shape at all.
Gotcha.
As you can see, there's windows knocked out, people are in it.
Okay. You been inside this building or someone has, Don or?
We did not step in. I have been around it multiple times and we've really been trying to get this gentleman, the environmental issues handled and
Okay, I don't have anything else. All right, I make a motion that we consider setting the date of October twenty-third, twenty nineteen at five thirty PM for three oh five South Eighteenth. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item D, consider setting the date of October twenty-third, twenty nineteen at five thirty PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of three oh five South Burn Street, as dangerous and unsafe. David?
Mr. Mayor, this, this trailer is totally ransacked. On the north side of it, it's a big open window, transients are living in it. The neighbors are reporting drug activity out of it. It has been totally demolished on the inside. We've had no luck making any contact with the owner. And it is not salvageable just from the view of the outside and going around it. There are some exterior structures behind it on the property too that are in very poor condition. There's a lot of trash, debris, paraphernalia, everything just scattered about the yard. And then they, multiple complaints from the neighbors.
Yep, looks pretty bad. I think I've been by this numerous times, yeah. Okay, I don't have any needs to go. All right, David. I make a motion, move that a public hearing for consideration of condemnation be set for October twenty-third, twenty nineteen at five thirty PM for three oh five South Burn Street. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item E, consider setting the date of October twenty-third, twenty nineteen at five thirty PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of three fourteen North Ninth Street, as dangerous and unsafe.
Mr. Mayor, I have some good news. The owners of this property came in and seen Mr. Swanker and have purchased or obtained a building or a demo permit. They've contracted with G and G Dozier to remove this structure. I'll leave it to you guys if we still wanna continue with that date to make sure this effort continues forward and to have it removed and to make sure this effort continues forward and to have it removed and have the hearing, or if you wish to just wait and not do it and see if they proceed. But they have purchased a demo permit.
If I understand with the demo permit, they have a bond for the cost of removing the structure?
Bond is being forwarded with G and G Dozier, who was their contractor.
But we have, we have money that if they don't, then we can go ahead and have it removed at their expense?
Yes.
With that. So, in that case, we really don't need to do anything, do we? So, don't have to mess with it again. We don't go through the cost of sending out notices and public hearings, so.
Yeah.
It's our expenses covered.
Yeah.
Then, right now, they've made the commitment to remove it, and, and it's pretty much done then.
Yep.
So. Really, then we don't need any action on it at all, right? That's great.
I don't believe so. Yeah, it looks like they will get it out.
And that's, that's all the structures that are.
All of that. That whole thing, clear back to the garage that used to be the old grooming place, the house fence, we cleared the lot. They will be required to clear the lot and seat it back.
Okay, so we can just move past this item?
Yep.
Great. Item F, consider setting the date of October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 317 South 14th Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Mr. Mayor, this house is, we've received numerous complaints. We've also been in attempts to make contacts with the owners. Has open windows, open doors at times, it's in very poor condition. And therefore, we're asking that it be considered for condemnation process.
I don't have any questions.
No, looks pretty rough. You're good?
I'm good.
All right. All right, I move that a public hearing, I make a motion that a public hearing for consideration of condemnation be set for October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for 317 South 14th Street. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G, consider setting the date of October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 325 North 19th Street as dangerous and unsafe.
This is a house, the owner of this house is aware of the process. He has been in front of you with other houses. He purchased a whole bunch of them from tax sale. This house is open, there's open windows, it's in very poor condition, and we are recommending it start the condemnation process.
You're referring to the gentleman from Lawrence?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any questions on this.
I don't either.
Good? Move right along. Okay, I move that a public hearing for consideration of condemnations be set for October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for 325 North 19th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. H, consider setting the date of October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 409 South 6th Street as dangerous and unsafe. David?
Mr. Mayor, we received a complaint that the backside of this structure is collapsing. It is very enclosed with grass and trees and debris. Don did walk around this and look at this and did say it was in very bad shape. You can kind of see one picture there on the upper right, or, yeah, of the roof. There's a hole in the roof. We've received several complaints in the last two to three weeks on this. That's why this is here.
Is that, when you're saying backside has collapsed, is the whole structure in danger of imploding on itself? Or it's, or not? I mean, is that severe?
Yes, you've got a full.
Back into the house?
Yes. And this is the one, if you, this is the property right behind Wesley Park. So, if you drive down that alley, you'll see that the whole backside of that is, is getting ready to collapse in on itself.
Okay. Would this be one that we would consider?
For immediate emergency?
Is it at that condition or no?
Don didn't say that to me.
I don't know. I went in through the front door several years ago, and even at that point in time, there was a lot of, of issues, you know, interior-wise. I don't know, because I haven't been through to the back part of it.
Okay.
I would say we go ahead and, when Don's back, I can, we can get with Jeff and get a, where we can gain entry and see if it is that, and if so, at the first meeting in September, come back to you guys and inform you if it needs to be immediately removed.
Great. If it's, if it turns out to be, then we can move on it quick and not have to.
Right.
Delay this anymore. I don't have any other questions.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. I make a motion that we move to, that a public hearing for consideration of condemnations be set, be set for October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for 409 South 6th Street. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item I, consider setting the date of October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 613 West Chestnut Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Mr. Mayor, this house was involved in a structure fire about three weeks ago. You can kind of see in the upper left picture there where the burn marks is on the ceiling of the roof. That room there was completely gutted by fire. There's smoke damage throughout. This was a rental location. The renter was in the process, and we have, Don has made some contact with the owner. There are insurance proceedings, but they are uncertain if she's going to rehab it or not. She doesn't know what she's going to do.
You said the renter was in the process?
Renter's in the process. He was getting out, getting his stuff and getting out. It's not inhabitable, but he.
But it was, somebody was living in it at the time of the fire?
Yeah.
Nobody was hurt?
Nobody was hurt. He was outside working on a car, and his daughter had left something on in a bedroom that started a fire.
Okay. Are we good? Okay. Took my breath here for a minute. All right, I make a, I make a motion that we set the date of October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the structure located at 613 West Chestnut Street. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item J, consider setting the date of October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 713 East Magnolia Street as dangerous and unsafe.
This is one we've been working, trying to make contact for two or three months. You can drive by this, and you literally can see straight through the house, the front, right through the back. It's wide open, and we're asking that the condemnation process start.
So, have you been able to make contact with the owner?
We have had no response back from the owner.
It's a nice-looking car out there in the yard.
Yeah.
I think this house has been abandoned for more years than I can count. That, that chair's been sitting out there for, hate to guess.
Must have been a quality item to last that long.
It must have been. Yeah, I think it's a lazy boy. I'm not sure by looking at it from here. Could be, could be another brand. Could be one of them Barker loungers or something. I don't have any other, any other questions. Are we good?
Good.
Okay. I move that a public hearing for consideration of condemnation of 713 East Magnolia be set for October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, we're almost there. Consider setting the date of October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 816 South 17th Street as dangerous and unsafe. David again?
Mr. Mayor, again, this one, we've been working on for three to four months. We've attempted multiple times to make contact, and we've had no contact with the owner, and it is in pretty rough shape, as you can see.
That's not exactly true. We have contacted your office.
Have you?
Yeah, we never received a.
Okay. All right. All right, good. Well, would you like to come up and talk?
Sure.
Yeah.
Come on down. I bet you thought we were never going to get to you.
Oh, well, you.
Just, I know the whole meeting was riveting for you.
Ah, it was great.
So far.
So far.
Yeah, state, state your name. Identify yourself, please, sir.
I'm Fred Shipley. I'm Laura's fiance. She actually owns it. I own the other properties in town. We've been using this for storage for, well, ever since we bought it from tax sale. And we use, you know, if we've got overflow of drywall when we're working on stuff, we, we put it in there, and we just in and out of there. I have recently went down and boarded up all the windows.
Okay.
They said that the roof is bad. That roof doesn't leak a drop. It does not have any public service hooked to it, and I do keep it closed all the time. And in fact, we do maintain the lots that are on. We don't just leave it sitting abandoned, and there has been no activity of people going in and out of it other than ourselves.
So, no plans to make it a residence? It's basically?
No, it, it's, yeah, it's, it's basically a barn. It's right next to the county.
Gotcha.
You know?
And see, that's kind of our issue. We don't allow houses to be used for storage of any sort. It either has to be a residence or occupied.
It's a primary structure.
Yeah.
Residential structure.
And there is a lot of trash and debris in the back, as you can see in that lower, and.
Well, we get it from you guys like that. We get it from you guys like that.
I understand. A lot of people get it from the sale, tax sales. I totally understand. But that's why we're here, and, you know, I would still recommend we proceed. We can definitely visit with them. I'll have Don make contact with them over the next six, till October 23rd, and go over what the processes are. You're not allowed to store stuff like that in a house or use it for storage like that. And October 23rd, we can make a decision.
We put a big garage door at one end, so you feel better about storage in it, or what?
Well, Kelly can tell you about the zoning.
It has to be an accessory use to a residential structure, and that residential structure would have to be adjoining it.
So, if it were next door to your house, you could make it into a garage.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's not adjoining, then it's not allowed.
Well, we actually own almost the whole block down there, so it is an adjoining property to ours.
Yeah, that, and that may be something, let's just visit and sit down, and we can talk about it, and get with Kelly over the zoning issues and make sure, and there may be a few things we need you to do, and we may be able to come back on the 23rd and.
Yeah, I mean, there's only two lots on that block that we don't own, yeah.
Okay. The, the structure, structural part of the house, is it, the, the outside looks like it needs attention, but the structural.
It's solid.
Integrity of the house?
It's solid. I wouldn't be using it for storage if I thought I was going to fall through the floor. I mean, obviously, I have enough problems.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I don't know whether maybe, maybe we need to put metal sheeting on the outside, or, you know, whatever. I think we could discuss this in better detail at a later time.
Yeah, okay, yeah, maybe you can.
We'd love to work with you.
Yeah.
If it, if there's something we can do with it.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, because we have other properties, and we don't have enough storage capacity for me to, you know, store everything that we need for these rental properties, so. It's kind of an asset to us, even though it looks like.
Right.
Hammered mule stuff, but. We do use it.
Looks like a liability, but it's really an asset.
Yeah.
Right, you know, and, you know, and if I wasn't here, you guys would have to mow it and everything else, you know?
That's true.
The brush definitely needs to be cleaned up around the, the house and the lawn.
If the city would send us a dumpster back here, I'd be more than happy to do that.
You're talking to the?
I imagine, I'll have Aaron visit with him, too, so.
I could probably get my friend Matt Bateson to come down with his little skid steer, and we'll just load it up, and it'll be gone.
But.
Another note, though, the storage is supposed to be for the house that it's a necessary use for, not for like a business for other houses. It's supposed to be serving that house as a necessary use to.
Gotcha.
I think that's what David worked out, looking at the area, if you own all the property in the block, or there are other houses, there's a lot of questions that I think you guys can discuss and come back with a recommendation.
All right, we will do it.
Sounds good to me.
Thanks for coming.
Good, thank you for coming.
Yes, have a wonderful evening.
You know, and do we want to go ahead and?
I think, you know, I think we could go ahead and set.
And you'll be back before the end.
Or we can give it to you, and you can knock it down.
I think we can set the hearing, and you and David can work something out, so you can.
Yep.
And we can let the car, the train, you know, like burn it to ground.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I would recommend, Mayor, that we proceed with October 23rd date. We will work diligently with this gentleman, and when we come back on the 23rd, we'll have an answer for you one way or another.
Yeah, I hope we can work out something that's satisfactory to all parties involved.
I believe we can.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that.
Have them want to leave him. I think it's just October 23rd.
October 23rd, that's.
5:30.
Getting ready to be.
Wednesday night of Neil Wall Week.
Oh, great.
Yeah, yeah.
I try to hide out, then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we're having corn dogs that night. I'm not sure.
I'll get them.
We'll see, we'll see.
Fried hakers.
Thank you very much. Okay. I move that a public hearing for consideration of condemnations be set for October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for 816 South 17th Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item L, consider setting the date of October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 904 West Main, West Main Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Mr. Mayor, the new code enforcement officer brought this to us several weeks ago. If you drive by this place, there's windows open on it. There's actually a mattress hanging off, out the front window of the porch. If I remember right, it belongs to a holding company, wasn't it, that we determined, Lacey?
Yeah, United, United Agency or something like that.
And they are defunct or something like that, and.
They, they're defunct since like, oh, like 17, maybe.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. We're getting, getting complaints on this. It's in pretty rough shape. We have not been in the inside of it, but we feel we need to start the process, and we will work diligently over the next 60 days to gain access. See if we can't figure out where it's, who's responsible for it or what, but we would like to start process on this one.
Is the service line coming to the weatherhead disconnected?
That I could not tell you, Leonard. I, I do not know. Don said something when this came up, that there was a gentleman several years ago, but he had really no rights to it, was starting to do something on it. And, but that person has disappeared, and there has been no work done on it since.
For the reason I ask, there, if that, if the weatherhead is still connected, and it's now been disconnected at the meter, the top lugs are hot on it.
I will, we will definitely check on that, make sure that's closed up.
Yeah.
This is the one that had the brush and the weeds so tall, you actually couldn't see the front of the house? And we actually mowed it here maybe.
Yes.
Couple of weeks ago.
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
And it's, like I say, it has that mattress sticking out off the porch, out the window.
I want that mattress. Don't let that get away.
To go with the chair.
Yeah, hey, there you go.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I got dibs.
I got a, I can make an arrangements to have it picked up and delivered for you. You're looking for somebody?
That would be great. That would be great, thank you.
All right, let's move along here. I move that a public hearing for consideration of condemnations be set for October 23rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM for 904 West Main Street. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay. Item O, where are we getting there? Consider demolition bids received for the following condemned structures. 517 West Chestnut Street, 606 Fountain Street, 215 Earl Street, and 1732 North 10th Street.
Mr. Mayor, as you see the bids there. Mr. Mayor, as you see the bids there, there is actually a tie on it, and Lacy can speak to, I talked to her, our procurement really doesn't break a tie, so we just went with the low bid overall of $21,000 to G and G Dozier, and that's our recommendation to award these houses to G and G Dozier for $21,000.
I, I just had one question, 1732 North 10th Street. Uh, I'm trying to think where that house is at.
It's a little house on a corner.
Deciding's off of it, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I know the house.
We've actually already abated it, so.
Okay. Okay, I, I wasn't sure whether that was the house or not, there was another one on, on 10th that we had some issues with.
Yep.
Okay, G and G Dozier has a total, as far as all four properties, the low bid of $21,000.
Who was the demolition contractor that did some work about a year ago?
That is, you're talking to the, out of Joplin?
Not for sure.
Did very poor work, we, Don had all sorts of problems. Had, we held money for over a year, Leonard, I think Don finally did release it, but I think we still have some, we're gonna have to go fix a few spots where there's still dirt needed.
Yeah, 14th and Magnolia is bad, and a lot of them.
Yes, that person, Don, has listed, we're not take, that didn't work well.
Yeah, I wasn't, was familiar with two of them, but I wasn't familiar with the third.
It's a new company out of Joplin that came in, it was the first time they low bidded it, and it did not go well.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any other questions?
No.
Okay, let's do it. All right, I make a motion that we move to award the demolition bid to G and G Dozier for a total of $21,000, do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item B, consider approving the addition of 10th Street from Chestnut to Oak to the 2019 mill and overlay project, and signing the appropriate ordinance designating 10th Street within the City of Independence, Kansas, as a main trafficway and resolution authorizing the improvement or re-improvement of a main trafficway within the City of Independence, Kansas, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof. Okay, Mike, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Mike Passour.
Oh, thank you, I thought you looked familiar.
Well, you read it also, I was gonna read it, but you read it, so that pretty much explains it. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Fund 92, that was the bond that we had some balance left in.
That is the, it was the 2015 to 2016 Clink Projects, and I, I went through this fund detail with our bond attorneys, Gilmore and Bell, and, and they advised that the remaining balance is, is actually technically not bond proceeds, but reimbursements from, from KDOT. And so they, they kinda at first had said, oh, you need to add them to the bond, but then later they, they told me that that's really not necessary, that, that they're fine with us proceeding using this funds with, for street purposes, but not tied to the bond. So that's why they're, they're not added to the bond at this meeting.
Yeah, and it's, it's not coming out of a, like a general fund or any...
It's, it's still, it's still in a special projects fund, we are, still have authority to, it's budgeted for next year. But Mike and I talked, and while we've, we've got them here, working, why not take advantage of, of our negotiated prices? And we've worked it out with the contractor that if, if it is approved, they can start right after they finish this one.
I'll notify them, but they, they left here and went to Kane with the milling machine, they'll be back when they're done down there.
Yeah.
But they're still, they're paving right now here.
Pricing of asphalt's very volatile, depending upon the price of oil. And while you have a good price, if you got the money, you know, you might wait till next year and it'll be doubled, or you know, it's just such much up, so much up and down in asphalt pricing, that if we have the money now, it's better to do it now than wait a year.
And they're also doing the ADA work on that now, so that'll be done probably by the time they come back.
Okay.
Lacy, you sent me some information that I've wanted to make available here for the people that are in attendance, but the people that'll also watch this meeting at a later time at their convenience. The, this asphalt projects that we have approved in addition to this one. The prior ones that we had approved totaled $276,292, of which we had set aside a budget of $300,000. And this one here that we're adding is an additional $194,737, and that was from the Fund 92, which you already explained what that was. And we are also doing an alley repair north of Westminster between 4th and 5th at, for $7,000. So we're actually spending $478,029, and we are gonna resurface, resurface 11,504 feet of roadway. So that's quite an improvement of what we've done over in the past, and I'm not good at converting feet to miles. I'm taking the guess that would be probably under two and a half miles, or two and a half miles, 11,504 feet, taking the guess, don't hold me to it. So even with that, all that cost, you're looking at two and a half miles of road improvement, so it's, it's expensive. So when people say that you're not doing enough to make improvements to the roads, we're trying to find money where we can, but as you can see, it's quite an expense to mill, to mill or to overlay or mill and overlay a road, so I just wanted to make sure people understood that. Thank you for the information, Lacy.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, any other questions? All righty. I make a motion that we move to authorize the mayor to approve the addition of 10th Street from Chestnut to Oak to the 2019 mill and overlay project and to sign the addendum to the Haggard Construction Company Incorporated contract, the ordinance designating 10th Street within the City of Independence, Kansas, as a main trafficway and the resolution authorizing the improvement or re-improvement of a main trafficway within the City of Independence, Kansas, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay.
You need a drink after that?
I need something more than that. Okay, item Q, consider bids received for the renovation of the airport water tower. Terry, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
This tower is currently out of service, we had some issues with it, the vent on top, it rotted off, and we're having some chlorine residual issues, we took it out of service, cleaned it, did an inspection. And it needs to be painted and some repairs done on it. So I sent out an RFP to get quotes for that, or bids, and that's what we're here tonight with those bids.
How long's it been out of service?
Oh, I, I don't remember exactly when we took it out of service, it's been quite a while.
Months?
Months, yes.
Yeah, okay. Are we familiar with the low bidder?
The actual low bidder didn't, couldn't meet the insurance requirements.
The one you're recommending, the Viking?
Viking. Viking?
Yeah, are we familiar with them?
I, I know the person that works for them, we've never done business with them before.
Okay.
They're actually here now painting Rural District 2 Tower out by Rutland's.
Yeah, okay. And none of these are local, right?
No, there's, there's nobody local with them. Viking's here in Kansas, that's about as close to local you can get.
Gotcha.
Are you removing the cathodic protection?
Pardon me?
Are you removing the cathodic protection on the tank?
Yes, yes. It's, it's not doing any good, it's actually causing issues, and with the new coating systems, the zinc coatings, it's, it's useless to have it, so we're getting rid of it.
Yeah, it sounded like from what you described, the lot of leaking and deterioration around the ports, but I don't know if you're replacing the system and just doing repairs.
No, we're, we're taking it out.
So without the cathodic protection, do you just increase your inspection of the tank and the coating inside?
We're, uh, we'll, we'll do a two-year, every two years, drain the tank, do a workshop and inspection of the coatings.
So the inspection was a little longer on, on the tank, or did that vent not appear that quick?
That one hadn't been inspected in a while, we hadn't, I'm, next year gonna be bringing a program to you on, on a maintenance program on our tanks to look at.
Is that something where you do a visual inspection with a drone or something like that to see the vent up top?
We, we tried, but airport is a don't fly zone for drones.
Yeah, wow.
You can't get them off the ground.
Wow, somebody has to get up there, huh?
Yep, you have to climb it.
They're interesting.
Be happy to do that if you guys wanna do that on the...
No.
I've been on top of a water tower and it's, it's interesting.
Yeah.
It's memorable, you never forget.
I bet. I'm gonna pass.
Yeah. I'll never do it again, but I did it twice, but legally, I didn't sneak in.
Oh, yeah, sure.
It was legal.
No, by doing graffiti or anything.
No, no.
Okay, I don't have anything else, good? All right, I make a motion that we move to approve signing a contract with Viking Industrial Painting in the amount of $129,650 for a painting of the airport water tower. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item R, consider a change order number three with Kelly Electric Incorporated for the electrical improvement project at the water treatment plant, okay?
This came up, and, and I actually initiated this, a lot of this. I was in the high service here a while back, and even with the lights on, it's so dark in there, I had to use a flashlight just to look at things. And I thought this is kinda crazy, would expect our people to work in this facility and you have to use a flashlight inside the building with the lights on. So we had the contractors out there give us a proposal to change out the lighting, to make it safer and more efficient. And this is what he came back with.
I'm very surprised this wasn't included by the engineering firm, so basic, I mean, the lighting there was so old and LEDs are so much more efficient. Was, it was never discussed with the...
We didn't address it with them in this, but we thought while we had an electrical contractor on site, we'd give it a shot and see, you know, what came back. I think it's a pretty good, pretty good deal, actually.
Do you?
On the, the price wise.
I just would have liked to have seen it included in the original bid. Cause I, I can't tell from looking at this if it's a good price or not.
Yeah, that was what I emailed, well, Kelly, that, I, I thought it came through the engineer and I was asking for a letter from them that they had confirmed in the prices to see what they came up with, but I guess that leads to the second question, since you initiated it and negotiated with Kelly Electric for the price, the engineer's not gonna want a percentage of that as a, as a, their fee, are they?
I mean, they reviewed the, the change order and they've looked at what was done, the electrical engineer from PEC went through the lighting package and thought it was a very good...
But they're not going to, sometimes like on this, you'll look at a 10% fee or 8%, so they're not gonna want $4,000 to look at a package that you worked with Kelly Electric to put together, and they said, yeah, it looks good.
There, there was no cost from them, so.
With this, and I know you're recommending the funding come from the revolving loan fund. As we've got the fund, we had initially talked about projects to use that on water line replacement, I think the automated reader, meter readers. Have you revised or expanded that to look at how it will actually be spent on projects so that, you know, like Gary said, this would have, could have been included in the, the bid package, so we have things coming up. We'll be able to make it a little easier for you to administer.
I'm, I'm not quite following you.
Have you, I, I think, say, our loan was $3 million.
Yes.
Have you taken the $3 million and identified individual projects that totaled to $3 million so that we can not spend it off on little things?
Just to be spent on the water treatment plant, now we, we can amend the loan if we wanna add more things to it, water line projects or further, we we need to start working on the second phase of that, we still have basins that we need to repair, clear wells that need to be looked at, and some other things that need to be done, security fencing and...
Yeah, that's, that's kinda what I'm getting at, have we got it outlined? I know some of the preliminary for the security fencing seem...
Out there.
Yeah, and I, I question, as close as the public is to some of it, the security fence is to prevent access to the basins, you've gotta have adequate distance, but you know, just looking at how we're gonna use the money so we don't get off track, and you know, we can address the issues that are, are pressing for the, the facility and not get sidetracked.
Right, we're getting started with them now to put together the second phase of this, to bring it to you for review and for contract design and get certain on that. I mean, some of the preliminary work for that's already been done.
Yeah, and one, with the, I think one of the preliminaries showed ADA accessibility of the facility. I think that's something we should discuss before we proceed with it.
There, there's several discussions need to take place with some of that stuff.
Now, was the automated readers part of that loan too?
No, they were not. We, we're gonna pay for that out of just revenue that we're generating.
It would be good to kind of, it's been a while, refresh our memory, not at this time, but you know, kind of put together a list of what's gonna happen, so.
I've actually sat down the other day and made a list of additional items that I think we need to, to look at out there, some one major one that came up from a KDHE inspection.
Cause the basin was questionable, whether the solid, the bottom would have to be replaced, and I think you had a good report on the actual test of it, that...
It, it appears to be solid, and so maybe we can do a liner in it and stop the leak each, and same thing on the clear wells, I think they're structurally sound and we're just having some water penetrating through, so maybe we need to look at a coating on the inside of them.
You had made a mention that the liners had improved so much that you were getting extended uses out, out of the liner, like five years or, or more? On, on the new liners versus what had been used in the past?
The, the paint, is that what?
No, the, the liner itself, when you were talking about the basin, about, you talked one time about putting in a...
No, we're talking about putting in some type of liner in it, that concrete's over 100 years old, so.
Okay, yeah.
But it's still pretty good.
Okay.
When we corded it, it was, it was in pretty good shape. We just have some seams that have opened up and we have some leakage going on.
Okay. I just did a, a rough breakdown, um, on here. You're looking at, uh, material cost of, uh, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. I didn't add the change. And the labor cost of roughly sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars in that forty thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollar, uh, change order for light fixture. And, and like I said, I, I don't have any idea whether that's, that's a good price on all those fixtures either. But, uh, that's the breakdown on that, so. Any other questions?
No.
Leonard, you don't have a problem with the five thousand K, do you, on the lamps, color temperature?
No, no, how do you feel on?
It'll look different, but.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's fine. Not my preference, but I know they're popular now. I, I think that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this should help, um, they, they probably got a several year, um, longevity as far as these lights. And as far as usage wise, should be an improvement on, on what we've gotten now.
Best.
So when you kinda look at it that way, there's some com, can cost savings on, uh, usage anyway of that, even though the fixtures may be a little bit higher due to they are LED type. So I don't have anything else. Gentlemen are good, let's move along. All right, Terry, thank you. Um, I make a motion that we move to approve change order number three with Kelly Electric Incorporated for the electrical improvement project at the water treatment plant. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item S, consider quotes received for replacement of a H V A C system at the water treatment plant. And I understand this is one that has basically shot craps.
Expired.
Expired, however you wanna call it.
Well, I didn't wanna say shot craps.
Pushing up daisies.
Yeah, pushing up daisies, yeah. And I understand that because of the age, um, you wouldn't, you would not be able to find a, a replacement coil due to, to the age of it.
They, uh, tried to, it's been down for quite some time. And we've tried and tried to get something that will work in the air handler and nobody will provide it. So it came down to putting in a new A C unit, new air handler, the condensing coil for the air conditioning. Plus a, you have to put a hydraulic coil in for the boiler heat. So it's, uh, it's a little bit of money, but.
Yeah.
Hopefully it'll be something that lasts for several years.
Yeah, last year, last year length of term, right?
Yeah.
And then some.
And then some.
I understood that we had, had notified all the local contractors and we just actually had two, two contractors that actually bid on this.
We asked everybody in the area to invite them, come look at it, quote it. And these are the two that we, we even advertised it on, uh, the GovQuote, uh, website. And the only thing we got was one of these people to respond to. Nobody seemed to be interested. I think a lot of the problem is the unit, the conditioning units on the roof of the building. And most of the local people don't wanna deal with.
Sure.
That situation.
Any discussion on the efficiency of the unit, Terry? I didn't see any mention of it.
Uh, it's in the quote, I believe.
One was a thirteen sear.
I barely see thirteen sear.
And then the other one didn't have, didn't indicate.
The higher one, the higher priced one says a thirteen sear. I didn't see anything on that, although I'm sure it's at least that, that's pretty minimal.
Yeah.
Just wondering. While we're saving all that energy on the new lights, it'd be nice to save it on the air conditioner too.
And.
And I, I can go back and have them quote a twenty sear if you want, I mean, it's.
I'm sure you'd like to get it replaced.
Yeah. No, I can imagine what that would cost. Efficiency comes with a cost. Okay, um.
So you don't know what the sear rating is on the.
I didn't, I didn't catch that it wasn't on there. Um, I thought it, they both had thirteen sear on them, but.
Yeah, if they're equal, that makes a big difference in the operating cost.
Sure does.
You know, it's worth, you know, even looking a couple thousand dollars, you'll pay for that pretty quick in the higher sear ratings. So you.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
You think it is thirteen, that they're both the same?
He, originally when Eck quoted it, uh, before we had to do the air handler, he quoted thirteen sear. But apparently he didn't on this one, so.
That's pretty minimal. You know, if the other one was a sear of thirty, then I would say, we're not comparing apples to apples, but.
Yeah, if it's close, I'd hate to.
Okay.
Well, if, uh, if Terry's comfortable with the sear rating.
Okay, okay.
I'd like to get them some A C, they've been all summer without it, so.
Sure, okay. All right, Terry, any, anything else? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
All right, I make a motion, uh, we move to approve the quote from Eck Heating and Air in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars for the replacement of the H V A C at the water treatment plant. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. And we are actually to item six reports. We've actually covered everything. Wow, okay, um, Leonard, you are, you're up. This is a report requested by the mayor from Commissioner Kofles regarding the code review received from Pool Fire Protection Incorporated regarding two twenty-three West Main Street, Leonard.
Yeah, we received the, uh, fire protection life safety review from Pool Fire Protection, um, August fourteenth. I met with, uh, Kelly and Dave, um, that afternoon, was it? And we went over the findings, we talked to Kevin, um, discussed, uh, the findings again. He answered questions. Then Wednesday, the fifteenth, um, David emailed the, the letter to Morrison Building and they were notified then. In, in the letter, there were ten items that were identified as requiring attention, um, sprinkler, fire sprinkler, alarm, uh, some areas separation and, and general things and relating to the life safety features of the building. Uh, but in, uh, David's email to Morrison, he outlined the findings. He, he's made it clear that the city's was intent and desire was to move forward as fast as possible to, uh, see that no further delay could occur. Then, uh, I think the fifteenth also, Mr. Morrison responded in a letter that he had received it and had been working to engage an engineering firm for the additional M E P drawings. The twenty-first, um, Mr. Morrison had submitted another letter updating the status that they began revising the floor plans for the apartments. There were some modifications during construction that wasn't reflected on the, the floor plans. And those modifications were being recorded. He had also hired a, M E P, uh, mechanical engineer to prepare the M E P drawings for the apartments and also had contacted a fire protection engineer that was gonna prepare the necessary fire alarm drawings and fire sprinkler drawings. So that's kinda the last update we've had, just waiting for those to be turned in. Uh, I think David made it clear that it doesn't all have to be submitted, but as it's completed, if he would submit it, then it would be forwarded to Pool Fire Protection for review so that, uh, the work could turn around. Cause first, the, the modifications to the code footprint, once those are done, he would submit them to David and forward them to Pool. He'd review and respond to any questions that he had. And then the same then, once the M E P drawings for the apartments are prepared, those would go in. And, and then following fire alarm and fire sprinkler drawings, those will go to Pool Fire Protection to review. All that was included in, in his proposal. Once the code footprints have been submitted and reviewed, then, uh, Pool Fire Protection will schedule a, uh, visit to the building to review the, the construction and any questions with the, the separation. So pretty much going, um, as fast as it can, it's just waiting for the, the additional information.
So basically, we're waiting for the, the, um, engineering and the fire, uh, safety guy. For lack of a better word, I'm not thinking very clear. It, it kinda, it's in his hands now and for them to do the review and then get the information back to us, so it can be reviewed by, uh, Pool.
Right, it's in the contractors, it's in Morrison Buildings.
Hands, yeah.
Hands, uh, what the, the life, the fire protection life safety review. It, it addressed the, the items in reference to the, the building code. Each item referred to a specific section of the code, which makes it easy to respond, uh, to his, his concerns. And those can be addressed. I lost my, my train of thought. But what, what the report did, it identified areas of problems, but it didn't give the solution. The solution will still be up to the, the architect of record and engineers of record.
Okay.
To, to answer the questions.
Okay.
And David did, um, issued a notice to stop work on the project. Do you remember, was that the fifteenth also, David?
Yes, uh, prior to the commission stepping in, we had given, uh, I had given a deadline to try to get this stuff in and that was August fifteenth. And that's where we're at now till we can get all of this done and then we can get things back going quickly.
And kinda defining the, the course of communication, it's, it's a little, it can be confusing. That our responsibility as a city is to communicate with the contractor. Contractor then communicates with the city, with the tenant. The tenant then is tied to the contractor, so his communication is to the contractor. So any questions the tenant has, he has to go to the contractor. Then the contractor poses questions to, to David and to the city. And then it, and then it goes backwards from city to contractor to tenant. That way, no one gets left out and then there's a definite communication pattern. And the same with the consultant, uh, the consultant is the city's consultant. So communication, if there's a question, it, it still goes through, through the path and, and back through to just make sure that there's no misunderstanding. And, and David's been sending emails for his communications and, and everything's being followed up with, uh, in writing. So if there's a question, it's easy to document and backtrack to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So, um, from all indications, I think everything is progressing. The city notified the contractor in a timely manner and responding. I think there's some questions that we're waiting on.
Questions that we need to visit about, but I think everything's going.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a question about, uh, in our special meeting where the tenant asked about some work going on, it needs to be defined. But again, we're talking, all this is in writing through the contractor back and forth, so, um, I think it's progressing. Just, you know, waiting on, on the next step and, um, the consultant is, is available as soon as he gets the information.
Okay, great. All right, Leonard, thank you very much for the report. Moving along, Kelly, we're, we're good with you, aren't we, Kelly? As far as you know, okay, okay. Uh, commissioner comments, gentlemen, anything that you would like to bring up?
Not at this time.
Okay, um, we don't have any more comments. I do have, uh, for public concerns, I do have, is it, uh, David, is it Cheryl Parker? Cher Parker, okay, okay. Um, you have, uh, indicated you would like to address the commission. This concerns public parking, traffic flow, street resurfacing. So if you would come up to the podium and, and, uh.
Somebody can run the timer.
Yeah, well, well, you'll, we'll give you three minutes.
It won't be long.
Okay, good. All righty.
I, I wrote myself an outline, make sure I stayed on ta, topic.
Okay.
But it is, it is limited to three minutes.
Oh, I know, I know, I got that. So I got my phone here, so pay attention to the time. Okay.
Okay.
Um, he's commented several times, I mean, he, he's a hometown guy, he was not born here, but he basically raised here. And, uh, we raised our kids in Broken Arrow and we lived in Tulsa Sun, but mostly Broken Arrow. And one of the things that they did that we found very helpful in their downtown area is the angle parking next to a cross street, like here you've got Main Street, you've got another street coming across this way. The angle parking that's right next to that intersection is reserved for economy cars instead of big, long, huge pickups. Because on Main Street, traffic goes quite fast and you've got big trucks. And we find it very difficult sometimes to safely see around the larger vehicles to back out of the angle parking spot on Main Street. Now, I, I'm well aware of merchants needing angle parking, cause you get more cars in the block versus parallel parking, we know that. So we're just asking you sometime, whenever, take a look at the safety factors of angle parking, especially on Main Street. The traffic on Penn tends to go slower, not as big of a deal, but on Main Street, it is, well, you don't feel safe backing out on Main Street, just saying.
Also the blind spot, if, if you're at an intersection and the, and the cars that are parked on the end. I've had to pull, go on that street that goes by the art museum, you have to pull clear out into where the traffic flow is before you can even see whether there's anything coming or not.
That is the downside to angle parking, I know that. So just saying, on Main Street in particular. Um, then the traffic flow thing, um, I encountered a circumstance today. Oh, I've never gone this way, when school just is getting ready to get let out at the middle school on Locust between tenth and ninth, um, the side of the street that's next to the, the school itself is the whole curb is yellow and there was solid cars on that side, solid cars on the other side. And your ambulance would have a very difficult time getting down that street that time of day, just saying. And, uh, there was somebody picking up somebody and they were sitting right in the middle of the lane and tra, one lane of traffic is all you had left. And I turned down there to come down to Memorial Hall and there was somebody sitting right there and they had to back up into the alley or back up in somewhere so I could even get through. So, and there's very clearly signs that say, don't park on this side of the street at any time. And I, we phrase kids, we know what it's like when you're trying to pick your kid up from school, but maybe there could be a better solution than having two lanes of, lines of cars on both sides and you have a one lane left on Locust, just that's just one of the. one of the areas. And then, as we've driven around town, this is something else that Broken Arrow would do on a regular basis, it's very difficult to keep up with, I get that. But if the city crews could take, and this may be something to request of the city workers, is to go, drive around, especially on your main streets, but even in your residential streets, and look for trees and bushes that are blocking your view when you're trying to turn a corner. There's a lot of them. Trees that are overgrown, and this is a street department issue, so I'm just suggesting that they take a good, hard look at that. And the only thing, real quickly, is we have been watching the ADA compliant changes right there on 10th Street, close to where we live, Matthews Edition, which is just south of the Riley preschool. And we're thinking, okay, you're making the intersections of the sidewalks ADA compliant. Now, how about the sidewalks in our neighborhood, which are like this and like this, and they aren't ADA compliant at all? Very difficult, if not impossible, for a wheelchair to pass over those sidewalks.
You're buckled up by tree roots and everything else.
So you're doing the intersections, I know you're forced to, to a certain degree, but how about the neighborhoods where you've got sidewalks that are cracked, broken, tipped, teeter tottering? Just suggesting that while you're doing the corners, could we eventually, with the homeowner's help, address the sidewalks? Just saying. Okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, with that, we've reached, go, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I did want to have an executive session for non-elected personnel performance with the commission and assistant city manager, about 15 minutes.
Okay. All right, that's the motion?
That's the motion.
Okay. Aye, second. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. 15 minutes.
15.
The meeting is back in session. There was no action taken. We are up to adjournment. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.